I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a moment of silence, please? Roll call board.
Council President Chamberlain.
Present.
Counselor Schneider.
Here.
Counselor Briggs.
Here.
Counselor Stickley.
Here.
Counselor Heising.
Here.
Counselor Steer.
Here.
We have six members present. We have four.
Okay, thank you. And council has had time to review all of the prior meeting minutes. We have quite a few in here, too. Do we have a motion?
I would make that motion, Mayor.
Seconded.
Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes was moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Briggs. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have no one wishing to address council tonight, so we're going to move into our many department head reports, and we're going to start with our utility committee.
That's you.
I'm going to talk about it.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's all right. We had some issues come up with tap fees and found that the tap fee that we were charging customers was much less than we were paying in parts. So it needs to be raised, but with the fluctuation in materials, Keith had a really good suggestion and wanted to just visit it at the end of each year to set the fee for the following year, so that we charge the appropriate amounts and don't overcharge, but charge enough to cover the fees for the material parts in the least. I thought it was a great suggestion.
Yeah, that is a good suggestion.
And great solution. It would be the water storm and sewer tap fees.
My only hesitancy is describing so many of Keith's decisions as great at this point.
It's evaluation time.
Let's calm him down a little bit, okay?
You've got an evaluation tomorrow.
I was on board with his solution.
Does copper go up and down a lot fluctuating? Is there times where you can keep an eye on it?
Right now, copper, PVC, building materials, they fluctuate on a daily basis. Many of the contractors or many of the suppliers are only giving us a 10-day quote, or it used to be good for 30, 45 days. Now, if you get a 10-day quote, you're fortunate because of the price fluctuation.
And the PVC is kind of hard to get right now, too, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Is that because of the plastic material that's put inside of it?
Not sure.
Who knows?
And I know I had suggested that we check into the polyethylene or whatever. Is that what it's called? Yes, because it seems to be the standard other places for taps, and it's a lot more, it's a lot cheaper than the copper, but depends on how comfortable they are using it, you know?
And that meets EPA mandates as well?
As far as I know. I mean, it seems to be the norm.
Well, that's what.
Other places.
That's what we're looking at right now, is to make sure that we can get the blessing to utilize that on our present system.
Existing, yeah, that it's compatible.
Yes.
I mean, I could make anything green coming out.
I'd make a motion to accept that. Great recommendation.
Second.
Thank you, Shane.
Council President Chamberlain moved with Counselor Stickley seconding. Is there any discussion?
I have one. So is Keith just going to have a green light in December to do it, or are you going to come back to council and report for our okay to do it?
What I'm asking is that council allow us to go by what the, what our base cost is on the first week in December is our base cost. We will set that, and that's what it will be for the following year.
Understand that. But I mean, are you going to follow through council or not through council then?
I wasn't planning on it, but you can if you want.
I just was wondering, that's all. That's the only question.
I think, I think we're expecting some legislation to be drafted by our legal department?
Yes, that's right. Yeah, well, because we got, I think the code provides that amount, so we'll have to revise that. So next time, we'll have a resolution for you guys to review.
I just wondered whether we was just going to go with it or we're going to bring it back every year.
And actually, we probably want to move on it so that it's ready to go by January 1.
Exactly.
It's actually the end of, don't worry.
All right, Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Steer.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have tree commission, and that would be Patrick.
All right, so we had a meeting Monday, October 11th. Larry Frye and Tom Collins were absent, but everyone else was there. There was no action taken. We're still kind of discussing the memorial tree program. They just want to make sure our prices are in line for the tree program. And with that, they are also looking at an area that covers about two acres, and it's actually between the trail, the new, the woods, the new trail in the woods back there, and the homecoming hill and like the parking lot area there. Their, Laura Camp had an idea about putting wildflowers in that area and then in the future possibly putting the memorial trees into that area as well. So they've got like an overhead map and some basic pricing, and I believe the plan is the Laura is going to like give that a presentation, I guess, is what I'm trying to spit out here, to the park board and kind of have them kind of go through that channel, see what they think, and then we'll go from there. So it's just kind of in, in the works right now, just looking at it, a planning phase, and seeing if people are interested in it. So the only other thing was that Pete Carr ordered some more trees, three chestnuts and three beech trees for the Indian Hill grant. We're going to try to plant those after the next meeting, and that was actually it.
Okay, sounds good. A lot of discussion.
Yeah, just planning figures at this point.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, moving on to finance committee.
Okay, we had a meeting on Monday, October 11th at 5:00. Myself, Shane, and Sarah were there, along with Jamie Ducare and Rick Baumgartner, and there were several issues. Probably the, one of the main ones was the city received over $388,000 in COVID relief funds, and there were various ways that that could be spent. After discussion, we decided to use some of those funds to get capital items like a generator, R-Tec fiber optics, and improving the Washington Street water line. Some of those funds were also to be used for essential employees as sort of like a premium for their service during COVID, and that they were putting themselves in danger. That, for all the people involved, came to a little over $48,000. There is still, those two items together came to roughly $205,000, so there's still some of that money left to be distributed or decided upon, but we thought that it would be better if we let all of council have some input or think about it and sort of give us what their opinions would be as to the best place to use it. We seem to be leaning towards infrastructure as much as possible to help offset some of the costs we would have to take out of our normal funds, and we made that recommendation with a 3-0 vote. Another issue was a transfer of funds due to a bond reissue. She, Jamie had to make adjustments. Eventually, it's going to save us some money, but we had to authorize her to shuffle some things around for that purpose. She had quite a bit of detail there, which I won't mention if somebody's got questions. We also had to increase the budget in certain areas for the land purchase of the Hatchnacki property in the amount of $51,704, and also the construction of the snack shack went over by $7,825, so we had to make appropriate adjustments for that. But that in itself, I think, is going to make up for itself because the snack shack has really been doing quite a business.
There's sync.
So once again, that was a 3-0 recommendation that we allowed Jamie to make those appropriate changes to cover those costs. Another matter was Envoy's Cloud, a new software system that would be implemented to handle billing, specifically water bills. It's user-friendly, will simplify the billing process. It will only cost the city about $1,000 a year, but it will save the city about $7,000 a year because of the fees that we would have to pay on credit card payments. There's going to be literature going out to the community of ways they can pay, having it withdrawn from the bank, automatic payment, different things like that, so that they won't get any charges added to their bill. If they don't want to get the credit card fee addressed to them, they have these other options available, and they will receive notification regularly that their bill is due, and, you know, if it's past due, it's past due, and things like that. So it sounds like a very, very good system. So once again, we recommended 3-0 that that be authorized and purchased for the city. It makes the billing process a lot easier, and people will get a little, just get a more understandable, user-friendly, which is a big thing nowadays. We're going to have another meeting on November 1st to discuss ways to handle the rest of the COVID money, and then next year, Jamie said we're going to get another shot of $388,000, so we're going to try and discuss ways to utilize that.
Are you asking for the department heads to come in on that meeting as well to give insight on some of the construction of, like you discussed, possibility moving into infrastructure and stuff?
I think it would be, I think it would be a good idea if they could be here.
And then if there's anybody else that something has come up in the meantime that they could at least look forward for?
And some of the infrastructure elements that we're interested in putting the money toward, because I think taxpayers would like that. We didn't have enough information on it at that time.
Right.
So I think by then, it would be, you know, clearer.
And then on November 24th, we're going to have another meeting to discuss the budget.
Start all over again.
Start all over again.
All right, we have three movements then in this finance. Do you, council wish to do them all together or separate into three?
As presented, I think.
As presented? How about, any other discussion on that? Okay, as presented, it is pretty clear, cut and clear. You've got your charts in front of you.
So you're going to do them all three at the same time?
No, that is broken down.
Broken down.
So, okay, so we'll move for the first one then? Is that what you're saying? Okay. Let me read it here so I can read it accordingly. All right, motion to recommend that 2021 appropriation ordinance be amended to provide for the use of COVID relief funds for the generator, R-Tec fiber optic, improving the Washington Street water line, and a premium to essential employees during COVID.
So moved. Second.
Council President Chamberlain moved with Counselor Schneider seconding. Is there any discussion?
This is for all of our city employees?
Those that worked through the COVID.
This is, yeah, these are the ones that worked through the COVID and that utilized everything that they had to, as essential being here. Right, because the ones that weren't here, that they got reimbursed for not being here.
I mean, public works and.
Yeah, all employees throughout the city, yes, yes.
If they worked.
If they worked, if they were required to work as essential.
The amount given was based on how much they were working during that time as well.
So it's not going to be an equal mode?
Some were part-time employees, and they based it on.
If they're full-time employees.
Each, yeah, each department head, when they brought this forward, they brought forward the hours that they worked and where they stood in that.
You know, to herald your question is, all full-time employees receiving the same amount? I would, I would answer that question, no. Would that be fair? I think there's an equation that Jamie used.
Hours worked and.
And so I don't think all full-time employees are going to receive the same amount.
It's more or less a percentage, wasn't it?
It was based on the number of hours each employee worked during the set time period, I think it was April through June.
Right.
During the time that the city building was shut, all full-time employees will get, based under the number of hours they worked during that period, the same way with part-time employees, it will be based on the number of hours they worked during that time.
And the reason for that was that they had to pick up some of the job of those who were non-essential workers.
Correct.
So that's why that's being noticed out of that fund, and that's something that actually was defined in the packet of directives for Jamie and how to use COVID.
I mean, are they going to buy their salaries, or is it just a?
I think it's a one-time payment.
Yeah, I thought it was.
It's a one-time payment, the way she.
Up to. It was so much up to. I wish I had it in front of me now, but it was up to so much.
It was a thousand max, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. So if they didn't work up to $1,000 max, then they only got to the hours that they worked, that they would get up to.
I just want to make sure that all of our employees.
All the employees that worked.
All that was working under COVID.
And all departments, yes.
All departments, okay.
And this is, this is really seen as a bonus to those. I mean, they're paid their base, and this is, this is acknowledgement of those folks working during a difficult time. So, yeah.
And different shifts, they had to come in, different shifts.
They did different shifts, they did different jobs, and they had to deal with public and everything else, so, yeah.
I think, I think, I think a lot of the public don't realize the extent that some of our city employees went to to keep things up and running during that time, and I think we heard from the police chief that he had two, two, basically two separate departments, each one working 12-hour shifts to try to keep from the cross-contamination of folks, so.
Public works, they, each of the men used to be in, and they had to be in separate trucks, and they came in at different shifts.
And I think the water department had lose, and cleans staggered theirs, too, didn't they?
Yes, and we had a second shift to water reclamation. The water plant kept completely isolated in different buildings.
So there was a lot of balancing going on, but to keep everything functioning for the citizens of Washington. So, I mean, you know.
Ambulances still ran, and police still took calls, and our systems still got maintenance.
DNS ran, fire department ran, and Jamie's people, they kept doing water bills, and I would do, so, understand. I just want to make sure that everybody gets treated equally.
And it's good that you asked that way, so that they understand that all departments, everybody got up to a max. Hours worked is what they got paid for.
Super. Okay.
All righty.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Counsel, Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Steer. Six yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay, great. Next one is a motion to recommend that 2021 appropriation ordinance be amended to provide for a transfer of funds due to the bond reissue Hatchnacki property and the construction cost for the pool snack shack.
I would make that motion.
I was seconding.
Counselor Stickley moved with Counselor Steer seconding. Is there any discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Steer?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our park board, that would be, oh, what? You have one more? Oh, yes. Jamie would be very, very upset with me.
I'll make that motion. It's interesting, the cloud legislation is at the top like that.
Yeah.
It's like a cloud.
Funny.
We're already on it.
Okay. Did you motion to move on the iCloud? Thank you.
And seconded. If we had, if we needed an explanation, Harold was going to describe the cloud. Harold is our, Harold is our IT expert.
I know what the cloud is. Has to do with computers.
It does, yeah. You spoke to Derek since our last.
No, I do have four computers at the time.
How many clouds do you have? How many clouds do you have, though?
I don't even know what a cloud is.
He was going so well.
And I don't see, other than the wingtips, I know I'm in a cloud.
You've been, yeah, you've actually been in the clouds.
In the clouds. I have an IFR radar. I can fly.
Let's vote.
Counselor Briggs moved with Counselor Heising seconding. Is there any discussion?
I think, I think the most important part of this is that, that the consumers know that if they're paying with a credit card, they're going to be assessed a processing fee. So the water department has many different options that the consumers can use to avoid that fee.
Right.
But if, with this legislation, the consumers are going to experience a credit card processing fee, so.
It'd be just like any, anything that you use your credit card for when you're on computer or anything, you're going to pay that extra fee, so I totally get it, but at least there's our options.
On cards, too, whether you get credits or anything else.
I'm still old school. I still write a check.
You can, you can go from 1% to 5, you know, a terminal processor, so.
So if our customers want to avoid that processing fee, look into different options.
Yes.
I do have a question. The machine down there, that's not included on this, correct? At the pool, when people use the card and stuff like that, that's not, that's totally separate.
I believe so, yeah.
This is for the invoices, the water bills.
Right, water bills and fees and things.
But it also, I think something important for people to understand is that it makes, the usability of it for the staff here is going to be so much easier, so it will free them up to be able to do other things.
That's true, that is very true.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Steer?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. We're out of the cloud and move into park board.
Now, it's my turn.
Yes.
So there's only one thing on the agenda here, but we did have something else that talked about. So the big problem with the park board was the rotary part. Somebody left it really bad, and we only have a $100 deposit, but our public works spent about $250 just in labor to clean it up. So, and this has occurred before. So they voted to take it from $100 to $350.
Does that include the fee then? You're not, so you're talking about $530 fee?
The fee at rotary is $180 for the, for the building. There used to be a $100 deposit.
Yeah.
So I don't know how they want to, everybody wants to do it, whether they want to write a check for $350.
Right.
And, and actually will hold that.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And not deposit it, and then if somebody comes back and says it's clean, and public works inspects it and says it's good to go, then they'll come up and get their check back.
I, I agree 100% that we need to have the funds to be able to come in and clean up when people have trashed it or not cleaned it as it should have been cleaned, and then you're spending two hours off, our guys off the road because we're cleaning this.
Their mess up.
But in the same token, I'm thinking, and I agree with you, we should charge. I just don't know about the $530 upfront, because if I'm going to rent for a bridal shower, that's going to be a two-and-a-half, three-hour shower, and I'm putting down $530, and then I, you know, okay, it's good. I agree with you. I'd rather have either, again, this is where the card comes in, you can give them your card and have them hold it, or you give, write a check and have them hold it, and then, you know, pay the fee.
Yeah, rather than take it and take all the money.
Right.
Take the money for the $180, for an example, and then hold, use a credit card number to process it.
What do you think?
If it's bad.
Yeah, because this way now, we do have, I would say, they got to have some kind of a means of holding that money, that the city can hold that, those funds, so that we have it backed up.
I, I agree that, I mean, I think it sounds like a lot of money. I also understood when we discussed it that with it only being $100, people were saying, forget it, I'll just pay the $100 so I don't have to clean up anything. And it's kind of preventing those people, like, they're thinking, well, $100 to clean it isn't that bad, so I'm not going to do a thing, and we're just going to trash it. So it prevents those people from, you know.
Honestly, either people have a checkbook or they have a card, and if they want to hold it with one of those two things, they can, because if they want to pay cash and say, well, I want to pay cash, well, you can do that. You got to hold it. We're going to have to hold it, come back and get it, or we'll.
After it's inspected.
Yeah. After, yes, definitely.
There's something in the ordinance that states that you have to clean it, and if it's not, then we have the right through Tom or somebody to go after to recover the funds necessary.
Well, that's what we would be holding that check for, but you would have to.
Well, if they damage more than $350, we're going to have to do some more to them than that.
That would be something different than damages or damages, and I think, isn't that in a different context?
Both the cleaning and damages are covered under the rental agreement, so even for those people that left it dirty and it cost us an additional $250, we have the right to invoice them for that. We just want to hold it, so it's a lot easier to cash the check that we have held than what it is to go after them and get them to pay for the cost.
Exactly. I mean, I'm just speaking out loud, and everyone has that, but I just thought if you put the $180 down for an example for the rotary, and then another check for $350, or a credit card on number, or $350 cash, then the city can hold that until it's being inspected, and if it's approved by public works, then they can get that money back, or check back, or we will run it to a credit card.
Yeah, we can give them options as how, do you want us to, you know, destroy the check, do you want us to, and if you've got their information on the credit card, there's nothing you do, you just, it's done.
You just rip it up.
It's finished, but, yeah. I like that idea better because then the public is not forking off $530 upfront.
Exactly. I agree with that, Mayor.
Do we have some policy, like, the people that trashed it are on a list that they can't, you know, sign up for one again?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have that at there, we have it at Ballfield, we, you know.
Okay, that's.
Everywhere.
I think that's necessary. It's good that once you've roomed it, you.
So I think.
That would be a change, because I did rent it for September, but since COVID and I had it, my wife had it, everybody had it. So when I rented it, it was $280, and I actually took that, and the city cashed that, so right now I'm trying to get my money back or something, or credit or something.
Yeah, it takes the next time they have to go through council to sign that they can write that check back to you.
Or they can, yeah, but anyhow, this way I think it'd be better for, like you said, Mayor, it'd be better for the people to charge them the base fee and then a deposit fee, which the city will hold and not cash, use, or otherwise, but once it's inspected, they can get it back, and there'll be no fault.
I agree, $100, people aren't going to, they're not going to look at that as a big deal, but $350 is quite a big chunk. It would be out of my pocket, so I think that, that idea I like, and if we can get it written up and changed, and we just really have to amend that, don't we? The way it's written for the.
I'm not sure if it's by ordinance or if it's just by.
Policy.
I think it's a policy because they, they change, where they come for, for the change of the pricing because of financing, but I don't know about that. So it would be a change of pricing anyway, so you might as well change it to where we can read it, how it's going to be, and then change the pricing and everything on it.
Well, if it's in the ordinance, we can get some legislation. If you guys approve the recommendation, we can get legislation around. If it's not in the ordinance, then it can simply be dealt with by a policy change, but maybe you guys, the recommendation from the park board is just to increase the deposit. Maybe you want to move to accept the recommendation, subject to the understanding that the security deposit will be held pending, you know, inspection and whatever, as opposed to being paid.
paid along with the, that sounds like, if that's what you guys are interested in doing.
When do you want to see this begin, then, on the first of the year?
Yeah, that's what, I think everything should be January 1st, don't you?
Yeah, three readings.
It's easier.
Well, you all.
Ordinance?
Is the security deposit amount in the code?
I'll know that tomorrow because I can't.
We always, I think we always have to vote on the change of the, of the cost of our shelters, I thought that always was, came forward, maybe from park board and then we just agreed to it, I don't know.
Well, we'll, we'll deal that, if it's in the code, we'll get legislation around.
Okay, so where do you wanna go from here? Do you wanna make a motion?
Accept this.
Or something, or what do you want?
You need a motion to accept the park board's recommendation, subject to that caveat that you guys have been discussing.
I would make that motion to accept the park board's recommendation.
Brooke will make it really pretty.
With the, with the idea, just for clarification, with the idea that the city's holding 350 instead of cashing 350?
That's my, that would be my.
They would, they would cash the, um, depo, or what the, the fee is, but not the, the deposit.
So, the 180 we're cashing, we're depositing, the 350 we would be holding.
And, and the same thing with the other pavilions, they're different pricing, but then they would be the same deposit, like a homecoming park, if you rent that.
It's just homecoming and Rotary.
Homecoming and Rotary.
That's how it's written, so it's just those two for now.
Those two.
Those are the worst ones because of the bathrooms and kitchens and stuff.
Getting two.
And those are the ones that we see sometimes are rented twice in the same day, once in the morning, once in the evening. So, it really becomes problematic if we have to go in at noon or four o'clock to try and clean it before someone else comes in at five.
I think you had, Harold, you made the motion, was there a second?
Not yet. I made the motion, need a second.
He had discussion.
Yeah, subject, sorry, I asked his question at the wrong time. I've been waiting to get the discussion.
So, I don't know if there's a second or not, Mayor.
I'll second it.
So, Counselor Stickley moved with Counselor Greggs seconding to charge a base fee plus a deposit fee that the city will hold pending inspection. Any discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Greggs?
Yes.
Counselor Steer?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
She just wanted to pay. That's true, if it don't work, we'll be back at the table.
The only other thing they talked about was the benches, but it's not on here. No, it's not on our agenda for the evening, but it did get passed out, did everybody get their benches for the, are we, are we gonna discuss this or?
You can, if it was discussed during park board, you can discuss it, Harold.
We just can't.
It was discussed.
We can't act on it because, I, I guess I don't know what you're even talking about ben, the benches.
So, it was discussed a park board about the, uh, benches for people's names, same as the trees. Did everybody get these, Brooke, or not?
They should be in the council package.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah. So, it was discussed a park board about these. And where, where they're gonna put them in a homecoming park. Keith was, you was at park board when you stressed. It was up here. So, they're basically, um, six foot by, sure, 26 inches. And the concrete slab.
Did it come out of park board as a recommendation, Harold, or just discussion?
That's a good question.
That's, that's what I was wondering, I'm, I, I'm all for looking at these.
I don't think it was ready for a re, recommendation yet because we wanted to also figure out where we're gonna put them. The, uh, cost is going to be approximately $2,500 for a memorial bench. That includes the bench, the, uh, the slab, the.
Oh, the slabs not on here.
Engraving of up to all three slats on the back of it. And that's, I mean, the bench itself is a thousand and you figure the cost of the slab installation, so $2,500, sounds like a lot of money, but it's also a 20-year bench, so.
So, yeah, it says here, um, benches will be reviewed, uh, approximately for park board at a later date.
Okay.
But I'm just bringing the information at this moment. There was some suggestions, some people that wanted to put a bench up on the top of the sledding hill. It's kinda hard to get concrete up there.
Yeah.
Some people said at the bottom that that might be dangerous. So, at this moment, I'm just bringing it to the city council, that they're being discussed for, rather than trees, that possibly some people that really wanted it with their names engraved on a bench.
In 20 years is a long time.
$2,500, my family's not getting me one. We'll pass a hatter on, Scott.
They could probably drop a couple zeros off.
That's a group.
I'm not getting a bench.
I am glad, Harold, I am glad to hear park board's talking about it because we've had requests in the past for memorial benches, so, yeah.
And, and, you know, and so, uh, they, they're working on it.
Yeah, good.
And, uh, that's about it for, uh.
I see the pickleball was brought up as well.
It was.
And that is gonna be looked at?
We're looking, we're looking at transforming the basketball court at homecoming park into possibly a pickleball court. I have Hugo looking into it, I'm hoping we can get three there.
Full tournaments, we got parking there.
Yes, we've got parking there.
It's clear.
It's, it's wide open space.
That'd be nice.
We put a couple memorial benches around there, they'll be seen.
Memorial trees.
It seems like nobody's using, utilizing the basketball courts that much, right?
They are still using the south, and I noticed homecoming gets used a little bit more than what it used to, but the south park is the place to play basketball in our parks. And, um, that one, I, I know some of the neighborhood kids play there, but people don't drive there to play there or ride their bikes there. Um, I don't know why, I, I think it's a great place, but.
A little windy.
Huh?
A little windy for basketball.
Yeah. You have to be a really good shooter to do well out there.
I, it just was brought to my attention, this, so I was glad to see it was discussed, um, that Swanton is putting in a pickleball and having tournaments and, you know, Waseon is getting behind the eight ball here, and I was just like, no, we're not, it's on discussion and we're gonna go, move forward on this, so, I like the idea of, of having it.
And Keith talked about the pavilion also, possibly, the problem lies in that, that if you rent the pavilion at homecoming to someone, then people can't play pickleball if they're gonna do outside, you know? So, that was a discussion too, it's only a discussion, but if the people of Waseon really want pickleball, then we should look into providing the courts for them.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, how many? Nobody knows, it depends on.
One of the neatest things that we did is we listened to some people who wanted to do the, um, the frisbee golf. And none of us knew, really had even heard about it that much, but they, we, we all listened and said, okay, and they offered to help out with financing and even help put it in. And I live in that neighborhood and there's not a day that I don't drive by there 10, 20, 50 times and they're playing frisbee golf. The only thing that stops them is snow. And sometimes they're even in there. So, that place, and, and I think it's hilarious because across country people are running and there's the frisbees, it's like, how are they doing that? But they utilize it, so I'm thinking if, if people are wanting this, I agree, you know, if we have that court, I think, let's try it and see if they get it.
And we may have to expand it, but who knows?
Somewhere start.
Lot of asphalt out there though, that's what we can see.
I mean, right now our pickleball court is positioned in the middle of the.
Disco, yes, not frisbee golf, disco.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right now they're targets for.
So, right now our pickleball court is in the middle of the disco course.
Yes.
So, I'm not sure if this'll come up.
Oh, the pickleball, I thought you were making fun of frisbee golf, so I'm like, okay, I said it wrong.
But I think this should come up during his evaluation, that if you put the, the pickleball court in the middle.
That wasn't a very great idea. That wasn't a great idea.
That was, that was.
Oh, it's still going down the side of the box, aren't you?
That was, it was, it was like, we gotta find one, we gotta find one now.
What do you want? You wanna?
The only thing is that we hear a lot of that, that, that sound of pickleball.
He wants that.
Alright. So, what are we moving on? I, I've lost.
First reading.
Concrete, okay.
I think you're on to legislation.
So, we're going on.
No, nothing was moved on this? I'm, I'm having to reread it, we've been on this report for so long. No movement on park board?
No.
Alright, and you guys already?
That's already.
Alrighty, sounds good, let's move forward. First reading. Resolution 2021-14 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with invoice cloud for utility billing services and declaring this an emergency.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion to place resolution 2021-14 on emergency reading was moved by Counselor Schneider and seconded by Counselor Greggs, is there any discussion? Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Greggs?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Steer?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Emergency. Second.
Motion to place resolution 2021-14 on final reading moved by Counselor Greggs and seconded by Counsel President Chamberlain, is there any discussion? Counselor Greggs?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Steer?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you, we have nothing under second reading, so we'll move on to third reading. Ordinance 2021-7, an ordinance authorizing the annexation of real property to the city of Waseon.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Motion to put ordinance 2021-7 on third reading and the third reading be passed, moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Steer. Is there any discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Steer?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Greggs?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Also under third reading, we have ordinance 2021-9, an ordinance authorizing the annexation of real property to the city of Waseon.
I'll make that motion also.
I will second. Motion to put ordinance 2021-9 on third reading and the third reading be passed, moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Heising, any discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Steer?
Yeah.
Counselor Greggs?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.